So in terms of just shifting down to HSA operations, as you know, we have been in a telecommuting environment since March. We have about 85% of our staff telecommuting. And that's 85 of about 20, 350 staff, 85%. And so really important to maintain communications with staff in this remote environment. As you imagine, it's challenging. We held, I believe, is our third town hall, agency-wide town hall, which allows every employee to either call in or log into Microsoft Teams and hear myself give updates, as well as my deputy directors and other HSA executives. It was attended by over 1,100 staff, which is really good, you know, good attendance. There was a Q and A that I was able to sort of scroll through the chat and answer questions directly, which, you know, with an environment of 1,100 attendees was a challenge, but very helpful just to get information out of it, not only about COVID, but about HSA operations and really the biggest concern of our workforce, which is what does my work environment look like? Am I coming back? Am I telecommuting? And how do I continue to provide the vital services that HSA does for San Franciscans? Noelle Simmons also hosted a town hall for her division in economic support and self-sufficiency. And that was able for Noelle and her team to drill down a little more specifically on operations within SFBN and CalWorks and workforce development. In admin and finance, so the budget is, has cleared the board hurdle this week and will be the final vote next week. We, as an agency, saw our budget, even though we had very large, as you know, reduction targets, we were able to cover a lot of those with additional state revenue, with, you know, very minimal programmatic cuts, of course, zero impact on employees, no layoffs, no position eliminations. In fact, our agency-wide budget increased by over $300 million. You might wonder, why are we increasing the time of COVID? Forty-two, four, excuse me, 45 million of that is due to an increase in food and our budget for food support for COVID, which is food pantries, home-delivered meals, the Great Plates Program, and the local share for that. And then another big piece involves our Office of Early Care and Education, which is revenue backed by the unlocking of, hopeful unlocking of Proposition C, which is currently in the courts. We also have major increases, as you, as you know, our caseloads are increasing. And so we're seeing, going to see major increases in our cash assistance budgets in county adult assistance and also in CalWorks. About 18 and a half million is for the increased aid payments in anticipation of those increased caseloads that we're seeing rise now. And also, and I'll mention, I noted earlier, sort of what is our role in helping mitigate the economic impacts of COVID? Of course, it's our role always, but magnified under this, and that's getting individuals, single adults, and also parents with young kids into jobs. And to that end, the mayor added another $7 million in our budget to expand our subsidized employment program known as JOBS NOW, as you know. And that adds about 1,000 wage subsidy slots to help additional San Franciscans get into jobs, but also to help our small businesses get back on their feet by helping them underwrite their wage costs when they hire individuals that come through our programs. I know Commissioner Yamazaki was around during our JOBS NOW launch under Mayor Newsom in 2009, where we placed over 4,000 people into jobs and we're really, that's the pace we want to do under this. We see that the, the impact, of course, is worse than it was in the recession and the job losses are staggering. And so we're going to go with, with the accelerated pace that we did in 2009 and hopefully have the same results. And I'm confident that we will. One of the big topics for our staff and understandably is, is what are our operations going to look like through the rest of the fiscal year, the rest of the calendar year, and then, of course, into next June, where the mayor has already announced and the city administrator announced that we want to maximize telecommuting in San Francisco through the end of the fiscal year, meaning the end of June 2021. That doesn't mean we don't have people in the office and also doesn't mean that we need, that we're going to continue sort of as is. As we see our caseloads rise, the needs for our services and our benefits rise, there are transactions that just need to be done in person. And so things like workforce, helping people apply for jobs and matching with JOBS NOW as an example. And so the question is, how many people need to come back and, and what is the environment going to look like and is it safe? And we're taking this very, very seriously as an agency and citywide as well. We never closed as an agency. Our lobbies were always open to partial lobby traffic. So I don't, I don't want calling it a reopening. I'm just really calling it a continuity of operations that looks a little different with, with a few more staff on site. And so we have health and safety plans for every one of our buildings that we have developed in conjunction with human resources and our facilities team and the city administrator's office. And they're for all of our buildings and they've been submitted to the city administrator, but they cover employing client health screenings, safety barrier placement in lobbies and interview areas for clients, facial covering and physical distancing rules, PPE distribution, capacity numbers for our lobbies, how many people can be in our lobbies, signage and cleaning protocols. So really trying to do as much as we can to keep our employees safe and healthy and keep our clients safe and healthy. And these are really going to be iterative, you know, their plans, but they're going to be iterative as, as we learn more about the virus and transmission, as we uncover things that we didn't know in terms of extra protections for staff and clients. And so those are currently with the city administrator and hope to be in their final state within the next day or two. And then just into, into the divisions in SFBN, I'm pleased to say we received almost a $500,000 grant, a little short of $500,000 federal grant to develop an online searchable CalFresh handbook and an online live chat function for our website that includes bilingual assistance and online instructional aids for limited English speakers to explain how to open an online benefit account and how to transact business remotely. You know, it's critical that, that we get the food assistance, income support, Medicaid or Medi-Cal benefits to clients. We want to do it in a remote environment. And so we're doing every tool that we have available to help our clients do that. We're also with the 20, over 2,000 people in our SIP hotels or shelter-in-place hotels that are COVID. We're coordinating efforts with our partners at the Department of Homeless Assistance and Support of Housing to get benefits to those individuals who have recently housed. We have four eligibility workers rotating through the sites, taking applications for CalWorks, excuse me, CalFresh, Medi-Cal, County Adult Assistance, and in just two and a half days generated 87 applications, 40 of which were for more than one program. Again, trying to turn COVID into a positive for people and housing them is certainly a positive and getting them benefits and attract to permanent housing is really a positive byproduct of the city's, the city's effort. I mentioned JOBS NOW in the budget, just to just get a little more granular, unlike JOBS NOW prior to COVID, we're going to be able to serve not only individuals and families who are on our benefit programs, but any household with income below 200% of federal poverty. So these could be households that have nothing to do with HSA, the money on any of our benefit programs, yet they still will be eligible to get a subsidized job through, through our efforts. Just a quick mention on the census, there's been a really late, big citywide push to get individuals to respond to the census, to fill it out, to fill out their census forms. We're assisting the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs, which is the city's lead on this, by making reminder calls. We've made 8,000 reminder calls to households and communities who are identified as having low census completion. We've also sent text messages through our texting platform to clients to remind them to fill out the census. As you know, it's critical that we get everyone counted. It, not, not only for congressional representation in California, but of course, a lot of our funding, not HSA is particularly, because it's generally tied to the number of recipients, but a lot of funding in the city is tied to census numbers. So with that lengthy report, I'll conclude and happy to take any questions or comments. I think I see Commissioner Semel pass her hand up. Go ahead, Commissioner Semel.
Thank you very much, Trent. I have a couple of questions. I'm glad that you're so involved in the census. I think, as you pointed out, it's terribly important and we need to make every effort. And I'm wondering if we're doing anything about getting people to vote?
Getting people to vote?
Yes.
You know, we, we
That's a nifty question, I realize.
Well, we do have a former role. We, there's a state motor, that the, there's a state program that, that I want to call it Motor Voter, but I don't think that's the name of it. Basically, it requires county human services agencies to provide voter registration materials to clients when they come in for assistance. But because, of course, we're not seeing very many people in person for assistance, I'm not sure how we're operationalizing that, to be candid. And we aren't
I realize you're operating in a very difficult circle.
Yeah.
But I think it's terribly important.
I agree, Commissioner. And I'm going to go ahead and make a note and circle back with my teams to see what we're doing around informing clients of that opportunity to register through our, through our agency. And
I just also want to make a comment about the 2,600 in hotel rooms. You never thought you would be a hotel operator, did you?
Nope.
Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's really, I mean, the, the, thank you, Commissioner. And a lot of faces I see on this, on my team and others deserve that praise much more than I do. It's really going to be a big lift over the next seven, more than that, 10 months to get individuals out of those, out of hotels and into alternatives, whether it's supportive housing or home rebound or other opportunities off of the street. And it's going to require a tremendous lift by city staff. We, you know, we can't, we're not going hotel by hotel. Just give you an example of sort of the lift it's going to require, because the way we're doing it is identifying individuals who are in a certain housing status to be able to refer them into supportive housing, but they're not all in a single hotel. So we'll be decreasing the census in each hotel sort of at the same time. We don't want to be paying for empty rooms because we're leasing the hotels. So we're going to be sort of moving people from one hotel to another hotel and then deactivating certain hotels. And you can imagine, this is going to be, this is a logistical
Nightmare.
logistical nightmare. Yeah, I don't want to say nightmare, but a logistical challenge, let's say, Commissioner Semel.
Okay.
But we'll be up to the task.
Say challenge.
Any other question?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
James McCray. I just celebrate the great work that's being done. Thank you so much, all of the team, agency staff. But as I drive to work down 13th, I see down third, down the back of Yosemite and Carroll, adjacent to our Alice Griffin facilities. I'm just overwhelmed still. And I, so I know you all are overwhelmed. And so is out of that, I say, thank you, and then just raise, what do we see? What is FEMA? What, what, what kind of additional help are you seeking? Okay, that's the question. More, more of a sermon, say shut up.
Yeah, no, Commissioner McCray. I mean, the
Once you minister, always.
Eloquent.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, COVID has highlighted, again, the disparities and the gaps in our economy and our society. It just magnified it, right? Not only the disparate impact on our communities of color, but on homelessness, right? I mean, it's, it's worse. I mean, it's, you know, we've done, we've placed over 2,000 people in hotels and you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily know, Commissioner, to your point. And the need out there is, is still great. And, you know, at $550,000 a day, we're stretching, I guarantee we're stretching that budget. And we would have loved to have done 3,000 rooms or 3,500 rooms, although Josh Keane from Real Estate Bali wouldn't agree. But, you know, we had, we had to limit it budget-wise. And, and we also had to limit, you know, because of the commitment to not discharge people from hotels back to the street, that's a cost. I mean, the mayor built in into the Department of Homelessness budget huge investment in backend housing for the individuals we've already placed in hotels. And, you know, the board is pushing to house more and, and, you know, it's not a, it's not, I wish it was a mission-driven decision because we'd house everybody. But it's, you know, obviously, you know, within the bounds of the budget and what, what we're able to do. And, and I don't see any more federal aid coming. Not even, not for generally for cities and counties and states, and certainly not specifically for homelessness. And the state, you know, has already passed their budget and really balanced it precariously on assumptions of federal revenue that may not be there. So we might see a reopening of that. So, you know, the need is still great and, and, you know, I'm pleased we're able to do what we can do, but it's by no means is solving this crisis. Wasn't really an answer, Dr. McCray. I wish I had one.
No, I just appreciate the sharing of the your, as representative of the agency, the sensitivity to it and what, what it is we're trying to grapple with and to know that you all are at the table with that and looking at that. And, you know, we just try to make the best decisions we can at every level. Compassionate best decisions, yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a quick question. This is Marquita Collins. Can you hear me? Okay.
I think
Yes, we can.
Okay, just a quick question. Right now for the, the face-to-face requirements for CalWorks and other programs, we only have the waiver until October 31st. So it will be good to work with the state to try to get these face-to-face requirements kind of extended and not so much on a month-to-month basis. It's the kind of wave or get extended further than October 31st for the face-to-face requirements for the interviews.
Thanks, thanks.
And I only say that because I know San Francisco is a sanctuary city and we sometimes do things what's needed for our city and our people. So with the face-to-face requirements of the interviews for the applications, we're only getting the month-to-month extension here, but if they can kind of push it out, you know, to next year, that will be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Noelle's on the call. She heard that as well.
Okay, so moving on to item five on our commission agenda is commission commendations for the following five people: Josh Keane, Eileen Malley, David Reese, Louise Simpson, and Peter Goldstein. And now I'm going to comment about each person. As you heard in the executive director's report, the city has accomplished a lot during the pandemic to keep San Franciscans safe and healthy. Many departments worked together often for the first time. When the Human Services Agency initially launched the emergency housing effort, it was determined that the best way to quickly help house the vulnerable homeless was with hotels. And to do that, we needed contracts, which meant we needed to help, get help from city departments. Fast forward to today, we've succeeded in sheltering thousands of San Franciscans, acquiring over 2,600 hotel rooms. Could not have happened and not been possible without, without these five people in particular from several departments. Both Executive Director Rohr shares his appreciation, which you've heard, on their contributions to the emergency housing effort. I'd like to introduce Josh, Eileen, David, Louise, and Peter, virtually award, each with a certificate of appreciation. I'm only going to hold up one. The first one is to Josh Keane. Josh is the Special Projects and Transactions Manager with the City Real Estate Division. He drafted and negotiated all hotel contracts with the hotel acquisition manager acquiring more than 2,700 rooms to house vulnerable San Franciscans. Eileen Malley is Deputy City Attorney with the Office of the City Attorney, Dennis Herrera. She reviewed and provided input on all hotel contracts and made herself available 24/7, literally. In addition to being a pleasure to work with, Eileen is flexible and innovative and in an approach to this very unique mission. David Reese Rice is also a Deputy City Attorney as the Human Service Agency's primary counsel. David continues to provide support around the clock and is always available to help convey the importance or interpretation of various legal areas. Louise Simpson, Deputy City Attorney, was critical in providing counsel related to the public health and well-versed in language regarding liability. And last but not least is Peter Goldstein, is Deputy Director with the Risk Management Division at the Office of the City Administrator. He made himself readily available to discuss the liability and risks associated with each contract by providing understandable language in a fast and reasonable way. And I'm going to ask Trent Rohr if he has any other comments he'd like to make now.
I do. And I see Josh, I'm trying to, it's really hard to find out all the partners. So I hope you're on, all of, all of you are on. You know, getting, getting any contracts or getting any lease through the city's process, given all of the necessary checks and balances to ensure, you know, that we're spending public funds in a responsible manner, takes a long time for a single lease or a single contract. We did 29 hotel leases. And remember, we've never, as a city and county, I don't think leased hotels before. So not only is something we've never done before, I don't think our real estate department has ever negotiated hotel leases. I might be wrong. The city attorney and, and the Office of Contract Administration and the Risk Manager, to do that at such a pace and such a volume was just remarkable. And, and not only my, my staff, but, but our city partners. And, you know, I think they, I know that they really, you know, agreed with the mission and what we were trying to do, and that was shown in their work. And they literally worked tirelessly, quickly, smartly, and, you know, were never a barrier to accomplishing what we did. And so this is just a little token of my appreciation and I wanted to have them recognized by, by, of course, this body. And just say a big thank you for your partnership. And there's no way we could have done it without you. So thank you, you five.
The certificates of appreciation
Excuse me.
signed earlier will be
President Khan, I think Commissioner, President Khan, I think Commissioner Semel wanted to say some, yeah.
Yeah, forgive me, but it's the PR person and me. That's a wonderful story and it would be great Executive Director Rohr, if you did an op-ed piece about that. I think The Chronicle would print it.
I, I hope, I hope my communications director is on. She can, she can ghostwrite something.
Yeah, I'm happy to go to John Diaz and because I think these are the things that people need to know. It's not just public relations. It's just something, we're doing something very important and the public needs to know it.
I, I agree, Commissioner. And I didn't say in my remarks.
I concur, I concur.
Yeah. Just by comparison, we did, as I said, over 2,600 rooms. When you look at the, the other counties surrounding us, we roughly have the same homeless population based on our homeless count as Alameda County and Santa Clara County, about 8,000, 8,000 to 9,000. We did 2,600 rooms. I believe Alameda County did about 500 and Santa Clara about 600. LA, which has about 60,000 homeless, did about 3,000 rooms. And so we have enough rooms, 2,600, for about 33% of our, about 32% of our homeless population. And when you just sort of put that in perspective, Commissioner, to your point, it is worthy of, of an op-ed and of a story to tell. And so
Well, if you need help with John Diaz, let me know.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner.
And I'd like to ask if any of the people that received the commendations would like to speak, Josh or Eileen or David, Louise, Peter, you're welcome to.
I'd like to say one thing. I just want to point out that I was able to do a lot of this work just because of the assistance and the partnership of Ari Walsh from Human Services Agency. I mean, I was able to work from my house 24/7 while he's working onsite. So he was kind of the eyes and I was kind of the fingers typing it up. And, you know, it could not be done without him. So he was my equal partner on this one. So I just want to bring that up too.
Thank you very much. Any, any other person would like to speak that, from the people that we've made commendations for?
And briefly, this is Eileen Malley, and I want to echo Josh's comments about Ari and all the HSA staff that we worked with, a client that I don't normally work with, and that was definitely one of the most rewarding things, was seeing the city team and people from different departments and different jobs all pulling together and accomplishing something that was very important. So thank you for the commendation. And thank you, Trent, and your commission.
Any other comments?
Okay, then we'll move on to President Khan? I have one last. And Josh beat me to the punch. I wanted to save, save this for last. I don't know if, if, he, he might have been before the commission, in front of the commission before, but Ari Walsh is our, and I don't know if he's on or not. He's our facilities director. And talk about working tirelessly. This guy was on the facility side for the hoteling, available 24/7. I don't know how many times I texted him or called him, you know, past 11 at night. And, and he and, and the team under him at the COVID Command Center and Josh, they assessed over, gosh, it has to be over 150 hotels, probably. It might even be more. I mean, the amount of work it took to, to do this, this, you know, I recognize our city partners. We haven't done that in-house yet. That's a future commission. But I just, I have to say that Ari just did an amazing job. And again, and something, you know, I don't know, maybe in a past life, he did hotel leasing. But so Ari, I don't know if you're on, but, but this is being recorded. So thank you so much for your work and know that it is recognized by me, by the commission and the executive team at HSA. So thanks, Ari.
Thank you, Trent.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, there he is.
I'm here. Thanks, y'all. And great job. This has just been a heck of an experience. And David Reese and Eileen and Josh, it's, it's like I got a whole new family. So it's, it's been an interesting ride. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, President Khan and Trent and Commission.
Thank you, Ari. Okay, moving on to item six, the presentation of the September 2020 Employee of the Month is David Libun Ayo.
Libanow.
Is that close enough?
Libanow.
Okay, well.
Libanow.
Correct me. The commission is pleased to announce that David, that's all I'm going to say, that David, CalWorks Supervisor and Site Manager Disaster Service Worker is the September Employee of the Month. David is Employee of the Month for a wide range of contributions to the agency and to the people of San Francisco. He excels as a CalWorks Supervisor, willing to go beyond the call of duty to provide the extra care and attention he knows our staff and clients deserve. He was completely undaunted when assigned a new position as Site Manager for the Emergency Housing Program led by HSA during the Shelter-in-Place Order. David quickly became the most reliable, high-performing Site Manager. His ability to perform at the highest level in any role that comes his way is truly awe-inspiring. As a CalWorks Eligibility Supervisor, David was responsible for overseeing a unit of eligibility workers in addition to providing various levels of overall program and service center support. He was part of the small team of eligibility supervisors tasked with ensuring the CalWorks Service Center was appropriately staffed for calls and in-person needs. He became known as Master Schedular for his ability to make complicated scheduling adjustments to keep the center fully staffed. He is also a skilled coordinator and project manager. David's pride and confidence in his work are well-respected qualities admired by staff and peers. He is hardworking, reliable, detail-oriented, and dedicated to serving by staff and peers. He is hardworking, reliable, detail-oriented, and dedicated to serving our clients. Recently, David was promoted to the two Employment Specialist Supervisor, a calling back to his true passion in the employment services for underrepresented communities. David became a disaster service worker known as DSW in the early days of the Shelter in Place Order. He ultimately served four months as a Site Manager of the Department Operations, otherwise known as DOC, at the Moscone Center. Not only is this role arguably the most difficult at the DOC, he remained in the role the longest of any Site Manager. He worked through his initial discomfort of knowing he was going to be COVID frontline worker, managing sites where COVID-19 positive guests were isolating in quarantine. He sacrificed his own health and personal life to fulfill his duties to the people of San Francisco as a disaster service worker. David quickly got his sites running like a machine under very difficult circumstances. He worked effectively with all the partners, including the Department of Public Health Staff, hotel owners and managers, BSW site monitors, hotel clients, contracted providers, and others. He was an absolute rock star, standing up to new sites while managing more sites than any other site manager. He also found time to support and mentor his teammates with his expertise and down-to-earth style. He successfully calmed site monitors when they were concerned about COVID exposure and taught them the facts in a time of chaos, heightened fear and misinformation. In addition to working nearly 24/7 for months, he somehow had the energy to make the DOC fun with his sense of humor and willingness to just be silly sometimes. Whenever asked if he might be able to take on one more task, his response was always, "Bring it." David exemplifies the agency's vision and mission in a true civil servant. The hotel residents have David to thank for being housed in well-run, comfortable hotels. The hotel managers have David to thank for keeping hotel guests calm and respectful of the rules. BSWs have David to thank for making their shifts easier, fun, and safe. The agency has David to thank for setting the bar for other site managers. The Emergency Housing Program would not have been, would not have functioned smoothly without him. One person truly can make a difference. David, thank you for all your hard work and invaluable contributions to the emergency housing effort and congratulations for the most deserved. And I'm going to just hold this up for a moment and then, congratulations, David and Trent, I'm calling on you to make some further comments.
I'll add a couple remarks. Thank you, President Khan. Congratulations, David. Very well-deserved and timely, given the discussions we've had already about our hotel operations. You know, I was on a call last night with other department heads. We have a 6 o'clock call every, every other day. And what I was, my report to them was that we need more disaster service workers to help our operations. And what I said was that most of the DSWs that, that have been working in the hotel sites have found it a very, very rewarding experience. And, and I wish I could have brought you with me as I was selling this to the other department and saying, hey, we need your employees to step up. Because I think, you know, I can tell by the smile on your face, you did find it rewarding. And, and it's just a little thing that we can do to say, thank you so much for stepping out of your role in CalWorks and into this brand-new role and doing it with such conscientiousness and caring and really modeling, you know, I think what, what I want a Human Services Agency employee to be, which is compassionate, responsible, hardworking, dedicated, and you exemplify all of that. So David, thank you so much for your service to the city and to us and to the clients that we serve.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to everybody and I'm part of a team and it always takes a team to let anybody shine. So I thank my teammates at CalWorks, I thank my teammates at the dock and, you know, thank you all. Everybody, keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Okay. And by the way, David, there are a bunch of people that are writing in congratulating you and thanking you for your work. I don't know, Louise, can you print that out and send it to them or?
I see it. Thank you.
Oh, you can see it?
Yeah, it's in the chat. Yeah, just open the chat box.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, David, again.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Someone in the chat said, say his name correctly, if possible, please.
Well, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. McCray.
Thank you, sir.
Well, and I was having such a hard time that I changed every time it said his name for what I was reading, I just referred to him as David because I didn't want to butcher it up again. So sorry for that, but we talked last week on the phone and he knows that I'm in his corner, that's for sure.
Thank you kindly.
Moving on to our consent calendar, item seven, do any of my fellow commissioners want to remove an item for individual discussion? If not, then can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item eight, we're moving on to commission business and I'm calling on Justin Chan to speak about homeless and supportive housing to provide an-
Analysis.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Rita. So, Justin, are you on?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Director Roar. I'm Justin Chan, Senior Budget Analyst for the Human Services Agency. The Homelessness and Supportive Housing Fund, formerly the Human Services Care Fund, pays for housing and services for homeless cap clients through savings resulting from the implementation of care, not cash. The ordinance requires that on an annual basis, the Human Services Agency report whether its projected savings were accurate for the year. Before I review the projections, I want to explain the Human Services Agency's continued relationship with the fund and its partnership with the Department of Homelessness and Supportive Housing. The savings from care, not cash, that support this fund result from two sources. One is the reduction in the homeless cap caseload and the other is reduced grant amounts for homeless cap recipients who are offered shelter. Since, since HSA continues to administer caps, we will continue to handle the calculations of these savings. We transfer these savings at the end of each fiscal year into the Homelessness and Supportive Housing Fund. The Department of Homelessness and Supportive Housing then uses these funds to administer housing and services for their clients. The savings for fiscal year 1920 came to 18.2 million, around 295,000 greater than budgeted, but 82,000 less than our final full-year projection. For fiscal year 2021, the official housing fund budget is set at 18.2 million, which is around 576,000 more than our most recent full-year prediction. In the weeks since HSA set its fund balance budget, the homeless cap caseload and the city's shelter bed capacity have been affected by COVID and social distancing requirements. These factors may continue to affect the fund balance throughout the year. I'd wish to clarify that all dollars which don't go towards the housing fund are paid to homeless cap clients as cash aid. HSA staff recommends that the Commission adopt the findings regarding the fiscal year 1920 homelessness and supportive housing savings and transmit them to the Roar Supervisors and the Office of the Controller. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the Commission? Okay, if I hear none and see none, we don't need to vote on this.
As a recommendation, I move acceptance of the recommendation if we need to do that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't believe we have a rule except to hear this report.
It's not an action item, it's just a report.
Okay, all right. George, 45 years and you're still coming up with all the proper things to tell me what to do. I love it. I do love it. Let's, let's, let's move forward to honoring Commissioner Yamasaki for 45 years of service to the Human Service Commission and the city and county of San Francisco.
Just shows how much patience he has.
I'm going to read it to you and George will obviously deliver it to you. This is from Mayor Breed. Whereas on behalf of the city and county of San Francisco, I am pleased to recognize and honor Commissioner George Yamasaki for his 45 years of dedicated service to the San Francisco Human Service Commission. You have made immeasurable contributions to the lives of San Francisco's diverse residents, families, and communities through promoting well-being and economic security. Your tireless dedication to public service and unwavering commitment to serving our city's residents is truly commendable and represents San Francisco values at their best. Therefore, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city and county of San Francisco to be affixed and it's signed by London Breed Mayor. Congratulations, George. Here's the certificate. And in addition to that, for outstanding service presented to George Yamasaki Jr. from the San Francisco Human Service Commissioner in recognition of 45 years of service and in the appreciation of your dedication and devotion to the community and commitment to advocating for the most vulnerable San Francisco. With gratitude and deep admiration, your fellow commissioners, Executive Director Trent Roar, and the staff of the Department of the Human Service Agency. Thank you.
Congratulations, George.
Congratulations, Commissioner. President Khan, can I say a couple words?
Congratulations, yes.
First of all, the mayor really tried to get on this morning and I'm going to read a text I got from her this morning. My-
Get your glasses, Trent.
Yeah, geez. It says, I have a conflict this morning. I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to attend. Please relay my sincerest regrets and heartfelt thanks and congratulations for all he has done over the last 45 years. It is truly appreciated. So Mayor Breed, sense of regrets, Commissioner Yamasaki. On September 26th will be 45 years. He was appointed, George was appointed, this is, I'm talking to, telling George things he already knows, but I want others to know, appointed in 1975 by Mayor Joseph Alioto. It was then known as the San Francisco Social Services Commission. And I tried to count the years that he served as president and I, and I looked through all the terms. I think it's 16 of his 45 years, Commissioner Yamasaki was president of the commission, most recently from 2004 to 2007. And many of you probably don't know that November 10th, 2005, is George Yamasaki Day in San Francisco, as proclaimed by Mayor Newsom on the occasion of creating the George Yamasaki Scholarship Fund to help foster children attend college. I have to say, so I have a, obviously, a 20-year history with George and, and he was in my interview with then Mayor Brown Chief of Staff Eleanor Johns in October of 2020, or excuse me, October of 2000, I believe. So George hired me. So along with Mayor Brown. And so, George, I am obviously eternally grateful for that and thank you for trusting me in this role for 20 years. I can't say enough about not only George's caring and leadership for the department, but his involvement. He had never missed a foster youth graduation, never missed a foster parent appreciation dinner or the holiday lunch. I don't know if he ever missed a softball tournament. And just, you know, sort of things, little things like that go a long way in showing the staff how much they're supported by a mayoral-appointed commissioner of the agency. And, you know, being a commissioner for this long and that many mayor administrations says, you know, it was really a testament to George, to you and to your professionalism and your intellect and your caring and your hard work. And I see a lot of faces on here. I see my, my former executive assistant Pam Tebow is on and I know people would like to say a few words as well. And I just want to conclude with, I really wish that your beloved wife Anne was here to see this. She was a fabulous person. You guys are a great team and I know she would be very, very proud of you today, George, as am I. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to a public comment to say, anyone who wants to say some words. I don't know how we do this in a Zoom environment, but I'll go ahead and give it a shot. Commissioner, President, Commissioner Semel.
Thank you, George, for all your service. You're an example to all of us that we need to follow.
James McCray, I would simply just say, Commissioner Yamasaki, thank you for longevity. For, to me, longevity models of the important qualities of dedication and commitment, but also your discipline. And what I love about it, all that is wrapped up in style. And
Moving forward, is there any other comments?
There are. George, I don't know if you're able to see the chat, but there are a lot of congratulations in the chat that I hope you're, hope you're able to, to read.
I wanted to make a comment. Richard Rom, George and I served together on the Board Directors of the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of California Historical Society. And getting to know George has just been such an incredible, wonderful thing. George often takes me back to my office after meetings in his little Volkswagen, slightly larger. And we have lunch together and regales me with the stories of San Francisco from 50 years ago, 60 years ago, the music scene, buildings, developments, all the, I've learned so much from George. And I just wanted to say, thank you, George. It's such a privilege to know you.
Thank you, Richard.
Is it okay?
Yeah, please, please.
Mark and Brenda Wango Oki, we're both performing artists. We've known George from a whole different world, from the performing arts world. We've played together for many, many years and I always look for his expertise in how to play swing music because to me, he's the, the band is younger, they're always like, wow, I didn't know that, George. So thank you so much for everything you've done for the city of San Francisco.
And for the music, George, you swing.
That's great. So-
My name's Richard Hashimoto. I just want to say thank you very much for recognizing George and all his accomplishments. I've worked with George for 15 years with the Cherry Blossom Festival and to me, he's the voice of the Cherry Blossom Festival. In fact, the voice of Japantown. I mean, he, he started with the Cherry Blossom Festival, what, 53 years ago and always been involved. So George, thank you very much for your inspiration and all you've done for our community. Thank you.
Next up?
Hey, Commissioner, this is Dan Kelly. I was wondering if I could say a few words about the Commissioner. So I was looking it up this morning. George, Commissioner Yamasaki served under 10 different mayors and eight different executive directors of this agency. Trent, even after 20 years, I think he still sees you as a newcomer. But I'm just thinking about how much history he has seen and how much of our department's evolution he has seen. So he came on in 75 and he was here for the resurgence of homeless persons on the street in the late 70s and the opening of those first programs for homeless- in the late 70s and the opening of those first programs for homeless persons, very chaotic. And then he was here for the '87 McKinney Act when we started to build an actual system of care. And he's still seeing the reforms and evolution today. Or even in child welfare, he was here during the crack cocaine epidemic when the system was just overwhelmed. But then he's had a chance to see it grow and the community partnerships that has, have come out of that era. Or, you know, welfare reform and how it just changed our relationship with clients to self-sufficiency. And he's just seen, voted on so many decisions and seen so much history. And he's just so attentive and from the Foster Youth Fund, we're so grateful for him turning up every year at those tournaments, no matter how foggy and cold it is. Commissioner Yamazaki to be there, wearing gloves bundled up, but he's there. And he's just, you know, it's such a privilege to have somebody, such a venerable presence on our commission in these 45 years to show the depth of his commitment to our community, to this department and to our clients. So thank you, Commissioner. I feel really privileged to be able to have worked with you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Commissioner Semel?
I would like to add my voice to congratulating Commissioner Yamazaki. It's been my privilege over the last few years to attend meetings with him and sit next to him and I've learned so much and I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Any other comments?
Christopher Singh? You're on mute. Commissioner Singh, you're on mute?
Well.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Mr. President, yes. Is it my turn?
Yeah. George, you can try. You're sort of fading in and out with your internet, so go ahead and try.
Try it, George.
Well, of course, my alibi is that I just am incompatible with anything electronic as Liz Lavar well knows. And so I hope, is it any better now?
Yeah, we can hear you a little bit. It's.
Right up to the.
Yeah, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay, well, anyway, I am just overwhelmed. The comments, the chat messages, and I've checked the participant list because I had that on my screen. And I thank everyone for sharing in this incredible moment for me. And Trent, thank you so much for remembering Anne. I, she is an unforgettable person, obviously for me, but I believe for many others as well. And I'd like to point out that even though I have substantial interest in foster children, she is the one who really was the motivating force in whatever I might have been able to do in that regard because I feel that they are the most disadvantaged clients of our department. And anything that can be done, even though I had to assist foster children, Anne and I were just 200% in favor of. And I had a prepared, she is the one who relocked, but there's so many things that have been motivating mentioned today that I'm describing that. I just want to say that I believe when I spoke up after the homeless fund report, I demonstrated my true role on the commission, which is chief nitpicker. I am the one who seems to be bogged down in detail while others are doing all the substantial work. And Rita, by the way, you are the one who sets the standard for public service and I'm favor of. I salute you. When I was appointed by Mayor Joseph Alioto in 1975, I never expected to serve 45 years under 10 mayors. But I must say that I believe my proudest, I believe, achievement, and we've been through many, many tumultuous issues. Thank goodness we have relative calm now despite all the turmoil. In the past, some commission meetings were so unruly that we had to adjourn. We had, despite all the problems, a relatively calm and productive period of time. And most of all, civility has been restored. There were days when our commission meetings were truly out of hand. And as I was about to say, my proudest achievement on the Human Services Commission is, along with then-Commissioner Brian Gaines, lobbying and urging Mayor Brown to appoint Trent Rohr. We have relative calm now turmoil of the then-Human Services Department, which, originally, when Mayor Alioto appointed me, the name of the commission was the Social Services Commission and it had responsibility for many, many, some commission meetings or other significant areas where the city aided those who were, who needed it. And through the years, there have been new departments created and other removals of these responsibilities from what is now the Human Services Commission. Now, that means the commission has less direct involvement, but it doesn't mean Trent Rohr personally is not involved because he heads the Human Services Agency, which has basically assumed all of these responsibilities that were transferred out of the Human Services Department. And I'm sure, as he mentioned, that it was never contemplated in his job description that he would be negotiating hotel leases, for example. But Trent has brought civility, stability, and I don't want to say he brought reason, but he has certainly increased reason and reasonableness during his tenure, which I hope will continue for the sake of the city and county of San Francisco and all of its residents. It's just been like night and day in many respects, Trent. We've been through really, really difficult years in the past and certainly we're still beset with difficulties, some so unexpected and unusual that none of us could have anticipated them. But you have risen to the occasion and I don't know when you get any sleep, but you attended to so many things, including those outside really the basic human services area. And I thank you and I thank all the support that I've received from my fellow commissioners and also all of my friends and family. And thank you so much, those of you who are attending this virtual meeting and have spoken and sent chats. I, all I can say is I am so grateful and may I take the liberty of saying thank you, not only in English, but, and this is a relatively calm and not to exclude period of time. And most of all, in, there were days, first Hawaiian, Mahalo Nui Loa in Japanese. Dōmo arigato gozaimasu. And finally, in language that if I ever come back to earth, I'd like to be in Italian. Louie lobbying and urging Mayor Brown to appoint Trent Rohr as the Thank you very much and I love you all.
Thank you, George. Congratulations.
Thank you, George. We have a video to show, George.
Before you show George the video, can I just say thank you to him?
Sure, please do.
David Ishida, George, thank you for your decades of community service. Your leadership was sorely needed at the time and I know that Trent and his team has valued your honesty and candor and sense of fairness and humanity all of these years. I hope that all of the other commissioners will appreciate that in addition to making all those hard decisions, your sense of team play, your wit, your sense of humor goes a long way in helping them perform that critical job that they all do. So anyway, thank you, brother. Appreciate all of your wisdom. And peace and long life.
Thank you very much.
Nice to hear your voice, David. Thanks for calling in.
Thanks, Trent.
We're gonna, can we play the video now?
Hello, everybody. Commission Secretary Elizabeth. Commissioner Yamazaki, do you mind calling in on your phone and narrating the photographs that I have of you? And Dan Kelly will help because your internet is coming in and out. I can read you the phone number if that's helpful.
May I take the liberty of saying thank?
Commissioner?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, but there's going to be an echo. Can you call in to the 800 number?
Or could he turn off his computer? Could he mute his computer?
Louie, this is for you too.
Elizabeth, is he calling in?
His audio should just pop on.
Muted now.
Sorry, folks.
Technology is wonderful when it works.
Commissioner Yamazaki, we can.
Human Services Bureau appointed me for many, many other who are certainly increased for the sake of, and all of its residents. We've been through, still beset with difficulties, so, so.
Well, perhaps we'll move forward with the photos. Dan Kelly can help explain them and then I'll show George this part of the his phone's busy. And I can show George the video, the recording at another time. That sounds good.
Here I am.
Commissioner Yamazaki, you there?
He's muted. Can you unmute, Elizabeth?
I tried for some.
Okay.
It didn't work. You're a co-host. You should be able to also.
Okay, let me see.
Oh, he's going to call in. I'll give this a try. Commissioner? Okay, you know what?
Put him on speaker.
Okay, okay. I was saying that I could just. Okay. 475 4499. But then you need the meeting ID and the passcode. So if you want to just go back on your Zoom. on your Zoom and unmute yourself, I'll just scroll through the pictures. And if you want to say something, give it a try. Dan Kelly, Dan Kelly can share it too. Okay? Okay. Okay, okay. All right. Give this a whirl. Thank you, everybody. So here we have Commissioner Yamazaki broadcasting the Foster Youth Fund Championship Game at AT&T Park in 2017. Dan, you want to help me?
Sure. Do you want to put it on slide, slideshow, Elizabeth? It's bigger. So this was just a fun day. It was, you know, Commissioner Yamazaki's been to every one of the tournaments. This was a fun day. We have had a partnership with the Giants and Willie Mays the last few years. And they let us have our championship game at AT&T Park. So Commissioner Yamazaki was the broadcaster. He was the John Miller of the game, broadcasting it. And we had the scoreboard with all the lineups. And it was a lot of fun. And there he is with Audrey Nauer, who's on the Foster Youth Fund Board. And I think that trophy may be bigger than the commissioner. That's a big trophy. He awarded it that year to the winning team. And I think it was DPW. That was a lot of fun that day. This is another tournament, all the way back to 2013. Every year, the commissioner's been there. Here he is with Shereen McSpadden, who was playing. And every year, he's there supporting the team, showing, showing his commitment to foster youth. And it always just lifts our hearts to see the commissioner there. Here he is. I think this was the last one. There he is with Eileen Cavan from the, from the Foster Youth Board. And like I say, some years, you have to bundle up when you're at those tournaments. It can get really cold out there at, at the North Beach Park. I love this picture. This is Commissioner Dr. Stewart, and this was the year he hurt his knee. He blew out his knee in, in the game. And this is Commissioner Yamazaki consoling. Commissioner Yamazaki is just such a kind and thoughtful person. He just emanates goodwill and kindness.
That's a great photo.
He has so many different parts to his life. This is at a City Hall event in the 80s. I don't know exactly what year. That's Commissioner Yamazaki with Commissioner Morrison, whose wife later seceded him on the board. And they're honoring foster parents. There is Commissioner's wife, Anne. Such a devoted couple. I really am inspired.
Now we have pictures of Commissioner Yamazaki from Hawaii. And one of his friends sent these to me. I don't know if she is still on the phone, if she could help explain any of these, or if Commissioner Yamazaki, you're able to say anything about these photographs. If not, I'm just going to scroll through them. And this is the final slide.
Great photo.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Bye.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our adjournment, I'm going to call on Redesemel to handle the adjournment of the meeting, because we're adjourning our meeting in memory of Ruth Bader Ginsburg.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Khan. And I'm honored to do so. Ruth Bader Ginsburg was an inspiration to every woman in the United States, and I hope to every man. She stood for all, meant so much for functioning democracy. And I like to think that our Human Services Agency will continue that kind of work, thanks to the good work of our director, Trent Rohr, and all the wonderful staff at the agency. So I move that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Ruth Bader Ginsburg.
Our meeting is adjourned.